Hello, everyone. It's Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022. Welcome to the Beacon City School District Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Kelly, roll call, please.
Here. Here.
Excused. Delayed.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Here. Excused. Matt, will you review the fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Okay, next, we will open to the public. As a reminder of the public comment policy, the Board of Education has established a single period for public comment at board meetings, not to exceed 60 minutes. All speakers and meeting attendees are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice, as well as disruptive conduct, including calling out, will not be tolerated. Speakers may generally comment on any matter relating to district business. The president and/or the superintendent may respond to comments when all speakers have finished. There shall be no further public comment or dialogue regarding the responses provided by the president or superintendent. The rules applicable to such public comment are set forth in Board Policy 1230, a copy of which is available in the signup book right here and on the district website. Each speaker has a four-minute time limit. Is there anyone who would like to speak? I guess we will start with Jane Servon.
So I'm Jane Servon. I am really excited to be here tonight. I know that Mr. Archer is going to be presenting a little bit about what's going on for Sargent. This is a big year for me because this is my 30th year here at Sargent School, which I'm pretty excited about. And when I think about 30 years in one place, it's a pretty amazing, pretty amazing memory all through that 30 years. I was, I'm a Beacon resident as well, which has made the experience really awesome. Raised two kids. They went to Sargent. They were Sargent superstars. Thank you, kids, that you were good kids. And it made it a good experience because it could've gone the other way around. So I've been able to experience Sargent as a parent and as well as a teacher. And being a community member has been amazing to be able to support the schools and the community at the same time. My husband's also a community, self-employed business owner, and we've just had amazing experiences here in Beacon. Just, it's so great to like be out in the community and run into kids that you've had, kids that you have, kids, kids, kids that you have now are happening to me, which is a pretty amazing thing. And it's really an awesome experience to be able to be a part of all of that. And so many people have to be thanked for that wonderful experience, including all of you. So I do want to thank you for all your support, all the board members that have been here throughout my 30 years because I do know it takes all of us to make this happen. This job is not easy at any level. Just recently, I was at the grocery store. It was Super Bowl Sunday. I thought I was getting a stink eye from this young kid behind the counter. Big cart, it's probably like 5:30. I'm like, he really wants to go home and watch the Super Bowl. And all of a sudden, he's looking at me and he's like, "Mrs. Servon." And I was like, "Yes." And I remembered who it was. And he and his brother went to school. And he was like, "Oh, my God, what is Sargent like? Is it still the same?" He's just like a freshman or a sophomore in college, but he's going through. And he heard about Mrs. Ty, and he was so sorry. It was just such a wonderful thing as a teacher to sit there and watch him reminisce about how wonderful Sargent was. And as I'm getting ready to leave, he says, "I'm gonna text Mikey, and I'm gonna tell him that I saw you." And then he says, "Wait, one more thing. Is the gym still blue?" And I'm like, "The gym, it is. It's still blue," you know? And I walked out to the car with just tears in my eyes, thinking, "God, this is amazing," right? He spoke for what everything Sargent was about. And I sat in the car and thought, "This is why I do this." You know, people say to me, "It's 30 years. What are you doing? You retiring?" It's funny, when you get to 30, you start to think about it. And then I realized, like, "Why am I do-" No, I'm way too young. And I love my job. Sargent is my family outside of my family. I've had such wonderful experiences with all the people I work there. People have come and gone in 30 years. Programs have come and gone in 30 years, but in the end, Sargent has stuck together. And I don't know what I would do without them right now. So I always say to them, "I'm not going anywhere as long as my first grade numbers are under 20. Thank you." And as long as New York State doesn't do something crazy like come up with some new Common Core. You know, as long as I'm healthy and my family's healthy. And I've always said, "As long as I'm working for Brian Archer." Like, this is a win-win-win at so many levels. So I just want to thank the Beacon community, the Sargent community, all of you because my experience has been amazing, and I hope to have a few more years as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Would anyone else like to comment? Seeing no one. Would anyone on Zoom like to comment? It looks like, is there no one on Zoom who wants to comment? Okay. Thank you very much. Then with that, we will move on to workshops. First is Sargent, Principal Archer.
Brian, if you want, you can also go from there.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for all the staff that turned out tonight. Thank you for your support. Sargent School, home of Sargent stars. I'm Brian Archer, the principal. We have about 276 students. And we have about 70 wonderful faculty members working very hard to create a warm and welcoming school. This has been a challenging two years. I might say the first 10 weeks of the year, our biggest challenge was staffing. Just trying to have enough bodies in the building was a huge, huge challenge. It's been a collaborative year, and I think we're getting over the hump. Each day seems to get a little better, and we do want to get back to a full sense of normalcy. Sargent School is committed to exemplary curriculum and meaningful student experiences from the student point of view. To support students, we are getting back to a sense of normalcy with the programming for students that is listed here. And as you can see, we're bringing back many of the traditional experiences our students have had. And to support our teachers and faculty, we have our data team process, iReady training, iReady benchmarking, and progress monitoring. Lots of several supports in place. And in this picture, we have 4th graders working on iReady math and showing me their punch cards. All right, and in this picture, the book, we are doing a staff book read called Close, A Close Look at Close Reading: Teaching Students to Analyze Complex Text. And we have two pictures of some older students and a 1st grader doing wall push-ups at one of our mindfulness posters that are located throughout our building. Now, to support the Board of Education's goal of a culture of care, the ideas we're, again, trying to bounce back, all of our staff have worked very hard to return to as much normal as we can get to. We are dedicated to a physically and emotionally safe school for all of our students and staff. In 2018, our related service providers started using the Zones of Regulation curriculum for our special education students. This curriculum is designed to teach students to identify emotional levels and tools to successfully regulate. Given the success, we felt that all Sargent students would benefit from implementation of the program throughout the school building. Currently, our occupational therapists has trained teacher assistants and classroom aides within the building on appropriate and safe use of equipment within our sensory room and with these posters and tools throughout our building. Long term, we hope to have the Zones program utilized with fidelity throughout the building. And in this picture, Ms. Appel and Ms. Cortina are introducing the Zones to a 2nd grade class. This is a 2nd grade class that just finished up morning meeting and a picture of our sensory room. And I do want to thank PTO for their collaboration and generosity in helping us get this equipment. Another goal is to create an ever-more caring environment where students grow empathy for each other in their school community. Students practice active listening at morning meetings, which also allows for students to show and share their experiences and to be part of the classroom community. In this picture is our caring tree. And we have a bulletin board with monthly birthdays. And students love to stop by and see their name up there. This is our morning news program. It's a video. You can watch the entirety of it. And in our morning news program, we have 5th graders who are news anchors. They present the morning news. We have 5th graders who do the editing and the filming. And this is me with two 2nd graders working on mindfulness breaks, movement breaks, and a daily joke. To support the Board of Education equity goal, we at Sargent have reflected as a school in how to create and celebrate more opportunities for our students and to increase students being in class and to decrease students being out of class due to behavioral disruption. We celebrate Sargent's diversity and provide the best educational experiences to help us keep reaching higher for our students. Here are several examples that allow all students opportunities to share and show their critical thinking. In these two pictures are 2nd graders working on classroom STEM box projects and 4th graders solving puzzles collaboratively. This is a 4th grade "I Have a Dream" project. And in the top picture, we have kindergartners doing morning meeting, and the discussion is about how to behave better the next time a substitute teacher is in. We have 4th graders working on a STEM box project. And this is a 1st grade Black History Read Aloud with a student writing response. These two pictures are 5th grade team working on the morning news. To support the Board of Education's goal of sustainability, we at Sargent are continually committed to improving and creating an ever-more healthy school climate in improving educational programming and conservation of resources. Here are several ways in programming that help us to improve. And I'm excited to say we returned to the washable, reusable trays in our cafeteria. So that's a step in the right direction.
Yes, it is.
All right, this is our main office team. Those are some pretty good people there. Our teachers and staff are very good communicators with families. We are open, continually building trust with all of our stakeholders. And here's a list of several ways in which we do our best to reach out to families and demonstrate our care. Again, building a sense of community. This, the first picture is the Student Council Winter Food Collection and the Turkey Trot. And to finish this off, I want to mention it's been two years since we've had our senior Thanksgiving luncheon. Two years. That's a big deal for our building because this is a huge tradition. We love this program. We want to bring it back. And in the first picture are Sargent staff, PTO parent volunteers, and 5th graders serving our seniors. And Mr. Edsworth playing the piano. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question. I noticed a lot of your staff is here tonight. And we've seen the presentations from all of the other elementary schools and the high school, middle school. And we didn't see this level of faculty and staff presence. Why, why do you have so many of your staff and faculty here tonight?
Because we're doing our best to provide a united front and to be supportive of each other and the kids in school.
A united front against what?
Just, we're united.
Okay.
We're all in this together, trying to get back to a sense of normalcy.
Okay. The one thing about your presentation that I'm struck by is how different it is from the other, the other schools' presentations. One thing that has struck me about the others is just a sense of real enthusiasm and innovation and a lot of great ideas. And I, I have to admit that I don't really, I don't feel that same feeling when I, when I see your presentation. So do you have any, any remarks about that?
I believe there's a lot of innovation here. Would you, would you provide any example?
It's not, I don't have a specific example. It's just the level of enthusiasm and is just, I don't feel the same level of enthusiasm as I did from the other schools' presentations. It's just an observation. And that combined with the number of your staff that's here tonight, it just makes me question, it just brings questions to my mind.
Brian, I have a question. Last year, you presented about the Target School of Improvement. How's that going? And how's the progress been towards it? And what are you using the funds for?
Well, we've used the funds for the iReady, the training, the program itself. We've trained a lot of staff. We brought those programs in. We purchased the, the book read.
Okay. And I appreciate the faculty coming, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. And this is something that I've asked of every building principal that's come and presented to us. Definitely, the past two years have been challenging, you know, for the school community, for family members, for faculty. Everyone has had to sort of adapt. One thing that has been a kind of common theme is that there have been some adaptations that were, that kind of came out of this crisis that some buildings are, are keeping. So what do you think are the most innovative adaptations that you've implemented on a building level? And what do you imagine incorporating going forward?
I mean, what I will say is I'm tired of Zoom meetings. I do think the Google meetups are conducive to meeting with parents when we have needs to. Just, it makes people more available. I do think we have all learned how to use the technology to help deliver better instruction. So that's certainly a positive. But it doesn't beat the in-person instruction and being with the kids.
Sure. Yeah, I, I was thinking of things that were kind of part of your presentation that I saw in terms of the, some of the outdoor classrooms. One of the things that has come up in some of the other presentations are about, for example, using responsive classroom, which has been part of the three-year training program that we've done for professional development. And like one school has shifted their schedule so that there is a, a morning meeting in every class every day for an extended time to sort of focus on the social, emotional. Is there anything like that that's been implemented?
Yeah, morning meeting is a building-wide expectation that we utilize in our classrooms. Yep. That's been a nice responsive practice where we get to know, get to check in with the kids, see what's going on, see how they're feeling, get them ready for the school day. Oh, yeah, and we do have an outdoor classroom. It's in our courtyard. It's wonderful.
The, one of the things that we receive a publication as board members called On Board. And one of the biggest focuses that has come up repeatedly is about the mental health crisis that's facing students presently. What have you, you know, what have been the things that you've, the most common themes that you've seen emerging from students? And what have you incorporated in order to address those?
Yeah, we have seen attendance issues. We've seen kids who have been out for long lengths of time who struggle transitioning back into school. And, yeah, the morning meeting is a big part of helping those students. I do a daily walk around the building. I check in with kids. I'm asking teachers all the time how kids are doing so we can make sure those kids are supported.
I'm just gonna circle back to the TSI piece. The state has said that they're not gonna withhold the accountability status. So what do you project building upon your current plan for next year? They're saying that you're gonna get the same level of funding. And so how do you project building on? Like, what have you done really well with it? And how do you project making that next step?
Well, what I will say, the, the past couple of years, it's been hard to pick up where we were a few years ago with being a TSI building. But we are picking back up our data team process this year. We're looking at that student data more than we have in the past. And we're seeing our, our students bounce back a little bit better than we thought.
Are you using like professional learning communities to look at the data? Like, are the teachers on grade-level meeting and going on that piece?
Yep, in, in my report, I had, one of the supports was a grade-level teacher meetings, and we, we talk about all these issues.
Thank you.
And what about the specific target groups, which I think were students of color and students with disabilities? Students of color, students with disabilities, what do they think?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, it was, it was Black students. And I think students with disabilities.
Right.
In, in particular math.
And have been, have, have you identified any specific strategies as far as how to address the gaps with those students?
Yeah, again, we've looked at how to implement our targeted help for kids in our grade-level meetings and our, and at our data team. And we look at our gaps where the, the kids aren't performing at grade level. And we are using the iReady training to have teachers provide the personalized learning that is part of that program. That, that's been a nice addition to what we were doing.
And Emery, I have a funding question about that. Is iReady, I thought that was a district-wide implementation?
Sargent, Sargent started it last year before anyone else in the district, and they use the state funds to do it. So as we transition to like a, I mean, the TSI thing is a little funny just because of all of the disruptions we've kind of had, like last year, we had so few kids take the test and whatnot. We, we wouldn't use TSI funds to keep paying for iReady, but Sargent, the Sargent staff was the, were the first ones to do it in the district last year. And they've helped the other buildings kind of with, with the implementation stuff.
Are there any additional questions?
Yes. So there was one STEM picture in there. Thank you. Can you elaborate more what was going on there? It looked like a structural project or something?
Yeah, they were building bridges.
Okay.
And the other one, they were learning about how to do explosions with ping-pong balls and so forth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was pretty cool.
Yeah, no, pretty cool for a 5th grader, right? The, your library, does this, did it have the lightbulb lab too? Or is it still there, or is it?
Yeah, we, we have like a MakerBot station.
Okay.
In there, but again, we've got to do a better job bringing that back, too.
Okay. All right. And, you know, I, I see a lot of staff here. Some of them have been direct influences on my kids, and I do appreciate you very much. You know, and so my kids are alums from Sargent. And I remember on my day off, they were painting the, the gym, and I actually came down. And, you know, I still, I still feel Sargent, a connection to Sargent. So I do appreciate your, your presentation. What do you, this is, I mean, you may not be ready for this because I didn't ask the other principals, but I usually ask in years past, like, what do you see Sargent in five years?
Well, I, I see a new library.
Yeah.
That's much more user-friendly for all of our students.
Okay.
I see more technology. I see more student point of view, constructivist learning.
Okay.
From the kid point of view. That's where I see education going to. You know, and really, teachers becoming more guiding for kids, taking control of their own learning.
Okay. And I, I remember seeing, reading something about school trips and stuff. Is that still a problem, or?
It's a challenge. A lot of the trips, we used to take kids on. The venues aren't open. So we are in the process of doing some 5th grade stuff, which we're forming a committee of parents along with our staff. And we're looking at doing something for each grade.
Okay.
Field trips are also, Anthony, something that, at the elementary level, we're working at. It's something that's difficult to get perfect equity with just simply because sometimes an individual teacher has something they're interested in or its school has a tradition. But we're working with the principals, AGs, working with them more directly that I'm trying to assist to just to kind of get that sense of, quote-unquote, "normalcy" back, you know, that we, that we get some trips that haven't been happening going, if at all possible, across all the elementary schools. My son reminds me quite often that he hasn't been on one in several years. And I pretty much hear that every other day. So it's, it's something that's on all of our minds, I think, as, as cases drop and whatever it is that happens with masks, I think people will feel safer and, and both, both will feel safer doing it, but also the venues or the places that we go. So our hope is that we can end strong with field trips this year across our elementary schools and at, in fact, all of our schools. And then next year, hopefully, it's just kind of back to normal with trips. You know? I shouldn't say "no," I'm using "normal" too much, but back to, back to doing a full complement of field trips.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions?
One last question.
Okay.
So I saw land to learn on the list there. Any other communities you're planning on bringing in?
Well, land to learn's a big one. We'd have to look into more community stuff, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Archer.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Archer. Next, we have. Next, we have technology presentation from Mr. Keeley.
Good evening, everyone. Our agenda for this evening is to go over the Technology Department organization with a small overview, talk about the things that we've accomplished in the past year, review some hardware upgrades, and talk about the budget for the- Review some hardware upgrades and talk about the budget for the upcoming school year. So every year, I like to remind the board that we're a small department, but we do a tremendous amount of work. And I couldn't do that without the support of my team. We have two network specialists. Typically, we have three information services specialists, but we have a vacancy right now. So if you know anybody, have them apply. We have our audio/video technician that you see quite frequently. He does an amazing job. And a data coordinator. And the past few years, we've been able to have summer student interns, aside from 2020 during the pandemic. And they have been a tremendous asset to our department, especially during the summertime as we bring in new equipment and we work to excise old equipment. And I think it's a great opportunity for them to get hands-on experience, learn from the experts on the team of what it's like to work in an IT environment. And we're able to do that right here in the district. This slide represents the tickets that we've seen over the past three years, three school years. And you'll see that we're steadily increasing. That's to be expected now that the pandemic occurred. And we've certainly relied on technology more than we ever had before. And so we're supporting all sorts of stakeholders still. We're supporting parents. We get questions sometimes about home network issues. Obviously, we've seen an increase in Chromebook use since the pandemic began. And that momentum has continued as the students return to the classroom. So that just gives you a small overview of the number of tickets that my team works with in any given year. And the numbers seem to continue to rise each school year since 2020. Some of the big projects that my team and I were involved with this year was rolling out close to another thousand Chromebooks to replace models 11 and 3120. They were end of support. And so we put new models into the students' hands. So we went with the Dell 3100 touchscreen two-in-one device. We purchased a weather station this year for South Avenue School. We've worked to upgrade our disaster recovery site. The last couple of years, we spent a tremendous amount of time trying to make sure that we have a robust recovery site that we will be able to turn on in the event of an emergency, whether the site, the main site here at the high school was ever destroyed by a natural or unforeseen event, or in the event of a cyber incident. And so we've been working to strengthen that site to make sure that it's ready to go if it's ever needed. Minecraft EDU was purchased for RMS and the VHS computer science classes this year. And it was previously used and still is used at the South Avenue School with the library classes. And so we see an expansion in the interest of that. It's a coding platform. It's sort of a virtual reality universe where students use code to build their world and they can build educational projects. And so that's exciting to see, especially with Facebook recently announcing that they're becoming meta and that the augmented world is what they envision to become more widespread in the future. And so this class and this program kind of gets to introduce it to kids a little bit early on. And one of the big accomplishments that I feel this year was facilitating the creation of esports teams. I was before the board a couple of years ago and some of you asked, what do I see in the future? And I said, I think esports is coming very quickly. And so it's finally here. I've been working with our neighboring school districts, our BOSI's partners at regional technology director meetings. And so there's an arena that opened pretty recently in, close to our backyard in Wappingers Falls, right off of Route 9. If you're familiar with the McDonald's, it's almost right next to the McDonald's in that plaza. And it's called Contender Esports. So BOSI's is working with them as the esports arena to create a coser and a program for schools to go and compete, have competitive esports right here in our region. And Contender is gonna provide a lot of the support, especially for the school advisors and coaches on getting those teams started. And I know initially, Wappingers, Millbrook, Arlington, and Weebatuck are all going to be participating. The inaugural season kicks off in a couple of weeks. And so that's something that I'm really excited for and I think that our students are gonna be really excited for. Some of the other 2021, 22 projects is that we've been building out a maker space around about middle school. And we've been working with Mr. Saltish, the middle school principal, to do that. We've installed, and there's just a small picture of the equipment that we've installed. It's 3D printers, Spiro Spark robots, Spiro RVR robots, which are tracked robots, Spiro Littlebits, electronic building blocks to build circuits. Making, Making Invention Kit is another circuit building kit. And a Padcaster video production suite, which the middle school has been using recently for their new morning news program. Other projects we've been involved with, this one's in progress. Started last week. I just took the pictures in the last 48 hours or so. We have new audiovisual bridge and the media suite in the rear of the Beacon High School auditorium. Last year, when I presented to you, I was explaining that the equipment was over 20 years old and non-functional. And this is a glimpse. It's still being worked on, so that's not the final product. But this is a glimpse of what's to come. So so far, they've installed new cameras for recording and streaming. You'll see them at the bottom of the screen, some of them on the light rocks, others at the front of the house, the rear of the house, underneath the lighting booth. We put in new sound amplifiers, which were about 20 years old, in the lighting booth, which will, that controls the whole sound system. And we put new Cresshons, the displays to manage the systems and work the systems from an end-user standpoint at the sound table, lighting booth, and the media recording suite. So we're really excited about that. And we hope that we can work with the TV production class to have students once again go down there, be able to film and record events, and have a hands-on experience right here in our building. Some of the anticipated hardware purchases for next year are not as exciting, but they're really important. Our upgrading are some of our servers. They're running version 2012, meaning year 2012. So we need to upgrade them to the latest version because that's going end of support from Microsoft. We need to upgrade our virtual domain controllers, which is how you get access to our network. We're looking to install a physical server for a domain controller as part of our RMS disaster recovery site. So in the event that our virtual machines were corrupted, we could rely on our physical device to get the district back up and running. We're in the process of upgrading phone and internet drops for half of the district classrooms. And we'd like to do another half of them next year to eventually upgrade to an IP phone system in all classrooms, not just offices. And our goal is to purchase another thousand Chromebooks to replace model 3180 and 3189s, which go end of support towards the end of August, early September. And we're gonna continue supporting our hotspot service for families in need. On this chart is the budget figures and numbers. You'll see that our overall budget is going up, not by a tremendous amount. We've been trying to utilize, continue to utilize e-rate funding, as well as BOSI's aid, to keep the budget fairly flat. However, the cost of goods, as you know, is increasing as a result of the pandemic and the microchip shortage. And so we're seeing that from our suppliers. So it's about $150,000 more than last year. But we're doing our best to provide the best technology, equipment, and education for the students while also being fiscally responsible with the funding. Future budget predictions, I only see them going up. We're seeing a high rate of inflation. And again, our vendors are reporting to us that the cost that they're seeing is going up. And we've even been told the quotes that you might be getting right now for next school year, going into the summer, could change and to keep that in mind. And we've never really heard that from vendors in the past. So it's a little bit alarming for us. You'll see, again, we try, we've been trying to keep the budget flat. We had a big crest there when we rolled out the one-to-one program and we installed interactive forums at the high school and the middle school classrooms that never had any. And since then, we've remained, I'd like to think relatively flat, especially given the pandemic. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
I have a couple, but who wants to?
Sure.
Why don't you, you can add in.
Yeah, the status, I don't know if it's Matt or Mike, but the status of the SmartBond?
SmartBond project is kind of wrapping up. So we, it was a lot of work this summer. Mostly the summer was the new cameras throughout all of our buildings. And then the, kind of like the emergency lockdown system that we have is probably in the next week or so actually ready to go to. As people may remember, we switched the SmartBond from laptops years ago to school safety. And so it's almost done, right? So before we use the new lockdown, it's kind of a more automated thing now, which will sort of streamline doing a lockdown. We'll make sure we do some communications home about it and stuff. You know, and with the students, so people are aware of the change. But, and also, buildings also have in, like, you know, like a key area, you know, like a lockdown button you can press that's accessible to like the administration and stuff. So, so it's just wrapping up.
Cool. Yeah, one more. I remember in the past, you talked about the badge system for the kids, trying to, as they learn incrementally through technology. Are you still doing that?
Yes, so Beacon High School has a class. It's called Networking Systems. Mr. Gersh is currently the teacher of that class. And students are working to earn Apple and Google badges so that they learn the skills to use Apple products and Google products. And as part of that program, they can, they're earning the digital badges as part of that class.
Cool. So still going, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
I'll start with a comment, which was, it was just interesting again to see the budget line about how we rolled out, you rolled out the one-to-one laptop initiative in 2019, 2020. And I think as a community, we can't thank you enough for all the hard work you put in ahead of that because it put us, as much as we all don't like remote learning, it put us in a position to be incredibly flexible and nimble during a very unpredictable time. And I know that was so much work on your part. So thank you. And I also want to commend your small department for being an incredibly strong support for all of the work that's been happening and only increased during the pandemic. So thank you so much for all of the time that you've put in and the tremendous foresight and flexibility and planning that you've put in. It's really appreciated. A couple of questions. One, just some, you mentioned some school initiatives. And so, for example, the weather station at South Avenue. And then there, that they are doing the Minecraft EDU coding initiative. So how do, how do schools, how do the buildings approach you about these ideas? And then I know that there are some schools that do tend to have maybe people who are more comfortable and have more facility with technology. So they might be initiating these things. But then is there a way to make other schools aware of it and provide a pathway for rollout?
Sure, yeah. All the principals are always welcome to engage with me and talk about what their building may need. And I also invite teachers to do that. Most of our teachers do it through our ticket system. That's how the weather station came about. One of the teachers at South Avenue mentioned that he was working on trying to get one. And I said, well, we have some STEAM funding and I'll be able to do that for you. But yeah, I work hand-in-hand with the principals. Some of the less glamorous stuff we've given to buildings is like portable PA systems. For, we did, I think, Sergeant and JV Forrestal last year. So I don't put that in the slide, just it's not as, it's not as exciting a PA system. But if there's, if there's technology needs that any of the buildings have, I definitely encourage all the principals to come talk to me. I'm always open for a conversation to see where we can fit something in the budget and get something done. And in the past years, we did help the elementary schools build out their TV programs. And it was highlighted tonight by Mr. Archer by providing them new cameras and equipment. We also put in MakerBot 3D printers a couple of years ago. So we certainly have been addressing all of the school buildings.
And the weather station, how did that, what was that used for?
It's, it hasn't been set up yet because of the winter weather, but it's going to be used for instruction with Mr. Burke's library media class.
Great. And the Minecraft EDU is through Mr. Burke as well?
He does that at South Avenue School, but it's also being used by the RMS technology classes. And just recently, Mr. Kurtz has expressed interest for using it here with her computer science class, the Project Lead the Way class at the high school.
And one thing that, you know, that I saw, you talked about in the past, I didn't see come up again, but the student-led help desk. Is that, are the interns kind of an offshoot of that? Is that a continuation and kind of addition to that program? Or is that something that's separate?
So the networking systems classes is really the student-led help desk. I'm sorry, I didn't emphasize that. So that's the class with Mr. Gersh here at the high school. And so they were helping us repair and excise old Chromebooks during the first semester of this school year. I think there was a handful of students that took the class. And they, I have to say, they did a tremendous amount of work. I know they helped us excise and document inventory, probably close to 200 Chromebooks this first semester of the ones that we collected back in September. Those 30, the 11s and 3120s. And so we get the new ones out in the students' hands. But again, we're a small department, so that class was essential in trying to get that, those old Chromebooks documented, wiped clean, and ready to be excised, which we hope to do soon.
And are you seeing students kind of planning for a future with, with that type of work that have been engaged in that class?
You know, I don't, I think the students are so young, they're not sure what they're going to do. I think what's great about the class is that it gives them a taste of what it's like to work in IT. And some of it is more glamorous, like fixing a Chromebook is a little bit more exciting than doing the inventory and the record-keeping part. But I think it gives them a well-rounded view of what it's like to truly work in an IT department in all aspects of it. And again, we hope that more students enroll in the class. And if we get larger numbers, then we can do a little bit more with the class as a whole.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
To follow up on that, I gather you have five student interns?
We did, yes.
Are they paid, or?
They are paid, yes.
And so then there's other people in the class beyond that, but?
Yeah, so the summer program is different from the networking systems class. The class is just offered during the school year for credit. And then students can apply during the summer if they want to be an intern for the district. And that's the paid position.
Is the weather station one that is capable of feeding information into the official weather grids or the weather companies? I know Weather Underground has an awful lot of stations here and there.
I'd have to check. I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Be worth looking into. It might be able to contribute.
Sure.
Any additional questions or comments?
I have, I have a Chromebook question. And thank you for your presentation. It's always so interesting to see all the technology you're bringing. For the Chromebooks, you talked about the upgrades to the older models. What is the distribution of those older models amongst the grade levels? Is it the, the grade levels that were first to get the rollout of the Chromebooks have the oldest ones now? And is it, is it kind of working in that kind of cycle? And then like the older ones that you're going to upgrade, are they currently like robust enough to keep up with the demands of, of the students?
Sure, great. So at the secondary level, it, grade level is a little bit more structured. So we know like a 10th grader has a specific model of Chromebook. When it comes to the elementary, it's a lot more scattered because we were in such a rush to just hand them out during the pandemic. You kind of just got what you got. So there was no grade-level specific model assigned. But we have records that show each and every student that has a Chromebook and the model. So we know how to get that into the correct student's hands. So sometimes when we go into a classroom, not everybody in a class would be getting an upgraded model because some may already have that upgraded model just based on the way the distribution went when the pandemic began. When it comes to Chromebooks being robust, they all run the Chrome OS operating system. And so Google pushes out regular updates to their operating system, and that's over the air. That's through Wi-Fi. So all the Chromebooks are running the same operating system. And the backend of the Chromebooks are pretty much the same. The real difference in, between the newer models and the older models is that they're not touchscreen. Or at least the 3180s, 11s, and 3120s were not touchscreen. And they don't have the ability to be used as like a tablet to flip over. But that's really the big difference. The Chromebook hardware itself really hasn't changed too much in the past few years. And then you have the updates that Google is pushing out routinely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? No, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Very good.
Next up is the athletics presentation from Mr. Giometta.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. I'd like to start out with going over a few of the highlights that we've had so far in this year, which I'm sure you will, you will find very entertaining. So first and foremost, for the second consecutive year, we've been awarded as a school of excellence in the Beacon City School District, meaning 75% of our varsity teams had a grade point average of 90% or above. So quite a great accomplishment for us. And as you can see here, after going over some statistics, we already have, we're already in line to have a third consecutive year as being a school of excellence. I give a lot of credit to our coaches, our students, our families for really focusing and emphasizing on academics and not just sports. So it's been a wonderful thing. And I think it's a great testament of what we're able to do with the kids, not only on the fields, but also in the classrooms. Moving on, I'd like to talk about some historic accomplishments we have. And it's quite fitting that we have And it's quite fitting that we have Coach Seaman here with us tonight, Sergeant Starr. So, first and foremost, I really want to recognize the Board of Education for being so open to an historic change that we've had in Beacon, making our move to Section 9. Not only have we seen some historic accomplishments in Beacon, but now we're starting to see some very, very significant success. So, first and foremost, our varsity boys soccer team was granted or named the sectional champions for the first time in Beacon school history. In addition to that, we have our head coach Craig Seaman achieve his 200th varsity win this year. So, everybody, if we could just have a quick round of applause with Coach Seaman leading us to victory. Next, moving on. Secondly, we have another great accomplishment here. So, for girls tennis, we had two athletes, Moore Lane and Isabel Ray. They are the first girls tennis athletes in school history to ever reach the quarterfinals of sectional play. One of the big emphasis of going to Section 9 was increased postseason opportunity. The more postseason opportunity, the more special meaningful opportunities our students are going to see in their lives. So, for Moore and Isabel, this was such a wonderful accomplishment. Coach Riley wishes he could be here tonight to recognize. So, if we could have a quick round of applause for them. And lastly, for our cross-country athletes, we had three athletes this year, Evan LaBelle, Rachel Thorne, and Ella Casson. First time in school history that we had three athletes in one season qualify to run into state championship meet. And so, we already see the benefits of making this move to a different section. We're already seeing all the positive things that our athletes are able to accomplish. So, a quick round of applause for our cross-country athletes. Some here, some other highlights that we had. So, this year, we had a very special football season. We had a 5-3 overall record, second place in league. We also had the opportunity to host a home sectional football game. I can easily say that we had over 1,000 to maybe 2,000 people on the back turf. The lights are up, people are out, and our Friday nights are starting to become a really special place and a place to be in Beacon. That was one of our overall goals. And now, being in a more appropriate placement, Section 9, we're able to pack our stands, we're able to give our kids more meaningful opportunities. We're also carrying on the tradition of doing our senior ceremonies for sports such as varsity cheerleading, our girls soccer, girls swimming, and varsity volleyball. So, overall, just a very, very positive fall that we've had so far, and hopefully, we can continue with the winter. So, a couple of things I wanted to mention, we were also able to host our second Girls in Sports Day. One of our five-year goals is to increase enrollment into interscholastic athletics. We started to notice that there was a lack of female participation. So, along with Katie Biorde, who I owe a huge thank you, a former Beacon athlete and a former Hall of Fame or a Hall of Fame member here in Beacon, we were able to run this program that brought in different colleges from the local area to work specifically with our female students. So, we had over 100 students from the elementary, middle school level be able to come out. I also want to thank Karen Pagano for volunteering her time with her team to serve us a wonderful lunch that day. Lee Radford, who was on the grill, everybody really chipped in for the better good of what we need here in Beacon. With that, it was a wonderful thing to see things becoming a little bit normal. And our homecoming, while it was a little bit different, and it was the first time that we were having a pep rally out on the turf, amongst other things, it was a very, very special week for our student athletes here in Beacon. We were able to carry on the tradition by having a donation for our fireworks display. And that same night, we were able to recognize all of our fall teams out on the turf for a really special evening. Something that's a, you know, that struck that was even a little bit more special to me is that we invited all the youth organizations to come and share in a special night with us, and they were able to take part in it. And just seeing community faces that you don't typically see at events was a really nice thing that we had. So, getting back to normal, I think we can even continue on with the pep rally outside. We had a very positive response from the student athletes, and it was just great seeing things flow the way they used to be. We also had a homecoming dance on Saturday. I myself couldn't attend, I had a former obligation, but the Beacon administration was there. We had over 400 students out on the turf for a homecoming dance, and we were able to honor a homecoming court. I'm willing to bet money, that's probably the highest amount of people we've had at a homecoming dance in Beacon because we only had a couple, and I was here for them. So, just a really cool thing, and our students want to celebrate in the accomplishments that we have here in Beacon as well. Our Hall of Fame ceremony this year, we decided to do it different for the first time. We wanted to do a venue as opposed to doing it at a game. And once again, we received nothing but positive responses. We were able to go down to St. Rocco's, we had a wonderful dinner hosted by them. And we were able to have all of our Hall of Fame inductees along with their families. We really opened it up to anybody to be able to come in. And it was a little bit more intimate setting, and it was a more special setting. And I got some great feedback, and we will plan on continuing to do that for years to come. Moving on to our winter, sorry, this is a little consolidated here, but I did want to highlight a few things, starting with bowling. Danny Gilio, which I don't have listed here today, but he actually just broke the school record with bowling a 289 in an individual match. And I also just found out that he is also breaking another school record by having the highest average within three matches. I don't have the specifics down, but that'll be another historic accomplishment that we have here in Beacon. Our girls basketball has 11-8 record. They play their final game tomorrow, and boys have a 12-8. And if you look at our records that we had in 2021 of 4-9 and 1-12, once again, we're set up for sectional play this weekend. We'll have some more meaningful games, and it'll be a better opportunity and a better experience for our students. Wrestling, we didn't have wrestling due to lack of enrollment during COVID. But this year, we were back in action. We had over 20 athletes come out for the wrestling team, and Louis Del Bianco was able to place fifth in the section, which is very special for him. And finally, our winter track, our boys team placed second and girls placed fourth in the divisional championships. Our coaches are getting used to a different section, different structure when it comes down to postseason play, but overall, very positive experiences. And that's kind of reflecting as a whole, our homecoming, our senior parent recognition ceremonies we do for each of our varsity sports. We were able to add additional lighting around Beacon High School for safety purposes. Senior appreciation ceremonies, crew team, which was a three-year goal, we are doing crew this spring. I'm very excited, we've partnered up with Spack and Kill. And a pep band, this year, you might have noticed more music being played at events, and we do have more plans to continue the music at all the different events that we have, or as much as I can convince them to do. Other things we're continuing, we're going to keep rolling with our summer school PE credit recovery program, which had almost an 100% success rate for our students recovering physical education at the high school level. Batting cage alterations at both the baseball and softball field. We will be continuing with our end-of-the-year athletic awards ceremony, which is a very special night, I invite you all to come. And finally, our college athletics commitment ceremony. I do have the dates listed down, I'm going to say them tomorrow night, I believe it's June 6th. But anyway, we take all the students who are committing to play college athletics, and we have a big ceremony for them in the auditorium or outside. So, that'll be a very special night for all of our students as well. From here, if looking at the budget line, we have a couple increases when it comes down to athletic stipends, athletic chaperones, and equipment. Minor increases, but I can explain. First is an increase to the equipment line. That's for our new weight room initiative to add some equipment. And it's not just the typical weight training equipment you would be thinking of. There's more medicine ball work, kettlebells, elastic bands. There's more different types of equipment that we want to use to try to gain or get more students involved in weight training activities. It's also going to align with our ninth-grade curriculum, focus on the health-related fitness that we're going to jump back into next year, which is trying to get all the students acclimated with the weight room in which way they want to desire. So, we're not just worried about muscular strength or endurance. If they want to focus on flexibility or other aspects of becoming healthy, we want to make sure that we have the proper equipment for it. Athletic stipends, we have an increase of $20,000. That's to be able to fund our Unified Sports, which is our students with disabilities who would be able to participate in bowling or basketball. Crew, in case we need to pay an additional stipend for a crew coach, depending on the enrollment that we have in that. And also, per diem coaching rate. Basically, this past year, because of COVID and people having to quarantine, we've had various coaches step up and volunteer to coach. We thought that'd be more fitting that if we could provide them with some type of compensation for giving us their time and keeping our kids on the court. Without our coaches being out there, we'd be canceling games. And I think we all agree that we need the kids participating as much as possible. And then finally, athletic chaperones. This year, we've really been having a lot of people volunteer or a lot of people work as chaperones to provide after-school supervision. Busing has been an issue with the time that buses are leaving the building. And we're having teachers actually take teams of class or teams of students into their classrooms to be able to provide them with an environment where they can work on homework or do work, so on and so forth. It also provides a little bit more supervision for our kids after school. And then increased announcing. So, this year, this is actually going to be the first year on the turf that we're going to have an announcer for lacrosse games. And we're also going to continue with providing announcers for as many events as we can, such as baseball and softball. I think everybody would agree, when somebody's announcing a game, it's a little bit more special atmosphere for our students. From there, just a few goals that I have here. One would be competitive cheer, being able to go to competition with our athletes. We had the highest number of athletes participate in our winter cheer program that I've seen since my tenure here in Beacon. Swimming K through 8, I think the big obstacle is going to be transportation, having the students come up from the elementary buildings. Coach Larry Collins, who is not teaching, but I still convinced him to continue coaching in our pool, is volunteering his time to do some curriculum mapping with our phys ed teachers to try to fit in how we can get all the students in the district K through 8 up to the pool during different parts of the year. Additional seating at the BHS turf for our opposition, which would actually spread out more people and allow more capacity. A varsity captains club, which is basically, I want to do do a club that can meet from every week to every two weeks with all the captains from the teams in the current season to talk about different initiatives that we want to do. A fall homecoming, a winter homecoming, a spring homecoming, and talk about any type of whiteouts or pink outs or any type of initiatives or any type of possible community engagement activities that we want to do to help support different agencies in Beacon. A varsity team mentor program, so something that I was researching is being able to send our teams down to the different elementary schools and provide mentorship and or tutoring for elementary-age students. So, the plan would be to coordinate with all the elementary principals and be able to say, on Tuesday, I can send you my varsity boys soccer team from 3:30 to 4:30. Would you like them to meet with a specific group of students, a specific class? We'll send the athletes down in uniform, and we can actually have them touch base. And the hope is that we can promote more participation in our athletic programs and provide a little bit more support to the youngsters who may need it. Our health education curriculum, we're looking at a new program that's a little bit more tiered when it comes down to what we're doing at both the high school and middle school. We're really trying to make it project-based and do different types of activities. We're trying to get away from the textbook and be a little bit more realistic and provide some real-life scenarios. Diane Tansy and Taylor Medica, who's at the middle school, they're working hand in hand on on March 11th at our superintendent's day. They're really going to dive into it and solidify how we should be moving forward. Weight room renovations, which we are in the midst of doing so, track renovations, once again, and then Unified Sports, all things that I've mentioned in the past, but are all are kind of becoming a reality. And it is reassuring going through the presentation from year and year and see those long-term goals actually coming to light, which is really satisfying. Moving on to the five-year goals, and they have, you know, they have been interrupted a little bit. So, every student that graduates from BHS will have been offered CPR first aid certification. That is part of our ninth-grade curriculum, which we hope to resume next year. Every student that graduates from BHS will develop a personal fitness plan. Once again, because of the weight room renovations that we're going to be able to do, we're going to be able to dive into different facets of exercise and working out. And we want our students to be able to learn and to know how to achieve what they want to achieve based on their specific needs. Increase in enrollment of BCSD students into interscholastic athletics. I know in the past that I've done an analysis from student enrollment. It has been thrown off a little bit, but we are seeing a great number of students come out for our teams. Elective PE classes at BHS, working along with the administration to provide more specific means of physical education that students want to do. If they want to do aerobic and fitness, then we'd have a class specifically for that. If they want to do aquatics, there would be a class specifically for that. Working with guidance and administration to figure out how we can kind of tailor our curriculum to make it a little bit more specific. And finally, I think we're going for the stars here. We're going to go for that school distinction award. So, we are a school of excellence, 75% of our teams. The school distinction award is having 100% of your varsity teams having a GPA of 90% or above. I think with the right coaches in place and just our emphasis and the extra funding that we're putting towards the after-school supervision and support of students, I do think that we can get there within a five-year span. So, rather than settling, I kind of want to go for the stars. I think that would be a really great accomplishment for Beacon, and that's something that we are going to start emphasizing a little bit more when it comes down to coaching and working with kids. That does conclude my presentation. Do we have any questions?
Sure, and comments. Number one, I note that the 11-8 record of the girls' basketball team has been achieved largely with freshmen and sophomores. Is that right?
Right, we do not have an upperclassman on our varsity girls' basketball team.
That's amazing.
Yep.
That must make you feel good about the future, huh?
We have one more tomorrow against Spack and Kill, and then we have sectionals this weekend. It's been a very different change of pace, very positive.
So, on crew, you know, that's a wonderful thing for a riverfront town to have a crew team. Could you give us some detail and what's needed there? I gather we're going to need some people to actually come out and do we need to get a shell? How do we pay for that, that type of stuff?
So, the way that we're able to work is that we're allowing Spack and Kill to use our pool during the swimming season. In exchange, we are allowed to use their facilities. We're actually joining the Spack and Kill's Crew Club for our student athletes. Now, the long-term goal is to actually have somebody want to take off with a crew program and start it within Beacon, which from what I understand is quite an undertaking. But we need to start somewheres, and we need to get our kids and find out if we're interested in doing so. So, I think it's a really cool opportunity here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, go ahead. So, thank you so much, John, your present. I'm glad there's a full house tonight because your presentations are always so well-thought-out and full of really great information. So, thank you so much once again for bringing such a thoughtful presentation for the budget process.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One is what percentage of our student population participates in sports? Do you do you know that off the top of your head?
I do not know off the top of my head. I can tell you that we were in the 200 to 250 range when it came down to fall sports in the past. I don't have the number for winter off the top of my head. It's something I can get you, though.
Yeah, I'd be really interested to know that because it's great that 75% of the athletes are, you know, achieving this GPA. It would just be great to know what percentage of our students are accessing these and if and identifying any barriers that that might be preventing them. You had mentioned, and I knew as part of the five-year plan was the lifelong fitness goal. I think that was that's at the BHS level. But I was wondering, especially given the past couple of years and the kind of sedentary existence that a lot of kids have ended up having, have you thought about pushing it down to the younger grades to start thinking about, you know, movement? And I mean, this is something that during the pandemic, I had to kind of tell my kids like that there had to be a movement plan built into every day. So, is that something that you're hearing from PE teachers that they're noticing, like any reduction in fitness level? And if there's a plan to address any of that? I know that the equipment room is really critical and that that's a bigger budget ask, but maybe there's lower budget ways of establishing that kind of goal.
Yeah, I mean, you know, looking at at the middle school level, we really wanted to dive into the project adventure. And basically, the socialization, the students being able to interact appropriately with one another, especially when they come from the four elementary schools into the high school, or excuse me, middle school. So, there we were talking and previously, we were mentioning the sixth-grade project adventure, starting with the low element activities, just for them to start to be able to interact with each other appropriately. So, the socialization part, I think, is extremely important at that level. I think it's important overall, especially with the pandemic going on. But from here, I think the middle school level, or I shouldn't say that what we are going to focus on in the middle school level is a little bit more collaboration with one another, of being a good teammate and being able to work, especially as you come to the modified age and you're able to play some more significant sports and structure. So, that's kind of where we're leaning to go. We really want to focus on the socialization of the students and being able to interact with one another appropriately, go through problem-solving activities and being able to, you know, discuss it amongst themselves the right way.
Okay, that sounds really, that sounds great. One thing about the credit recovery has come up, and I know that that's been a really successful program. I was wondering if you had, I know you had identified some barriers to people, to students participating in the swimming unit due to maybe some body concern issues and sort of feeling a little bit vulnerable in that way. Have you identified any other barriers to why they might be not achieving the credits during the school year? I know it's very important that we have the recovery during the summer, but that that option for them, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of, it's a little bit baffling right now because with our limited locker room usage during the day. So, one of the biggest barriers were students getting changed for phys ed class. This past year, we haven't required them to do so. We're requiring them to show up with athletic attire and be able to participate. We're requiring them to show up with athletic attire and be able to participate appropriately with what they're wearing. But ultimately, it's a little hard to explain while you're still seeing some numbers low. I don't know if that has to do with just the way things are right now, or if it has to do with the opportunities that we're providing kids. That's kind of why I emphasize on the elective classes. I just feel that students would be more apt to participate and engage if they were doing something that they liked with other people who wanted to do it. So for instance, if we did something like an aquatics unit, and we had a group of 20 students who wanted to do nothing but be in the pool, learn aquatics techniques, become lifeguard certified, that group, I imagine, who signs up for that is going to be engaged in that activity. So if we start to look at how we can tailor and structure our classes for, you know, the population that we have, I think that's going to make a difference, you know, with the success that we're having in phys ed.
And just the last, well, one comment is, I really always appreciate that you have come with such a strong vision for the department, and it's been really great to watch it grow over the past several years into, you know, achieving the move to Section Nine and the other, bringing crew and all of these things. So it's really satisfying to see that. I kind of have a challenge for you, which is, I'm just very cognizant of the fact that half of our population, at least in Beacon, is a Title I population. And I think about this a lot. As the pandemic has progressed, we've had a lot of people move to Beacon who are paying, you know, cash for their houses or who have a lot more means. So I think this divide between people who have and people who are really struggling and don't, especially children who don't have access to things, is wider. And so one of the things, like when you mentioned the varsity mentors, I think that's such a great idea, and the idea of maybe looking for opportunities to bring athletic experiences to kids whose parents can't pay for a team or go on a travel team because gas or hotels or restaurants associated with that, you know, especially for a 10-year-old, is not going to be in their budget. What are ways that we could bring that athletic experience to younger students so they start to think of themselves as Beacon athletes at a younger age, and so that ladders up into later years?
No, that's a great point. And one thing that I really take pride in is our collaboration with the youth organizations that we have here in Beacon. I mean, between the Beacon Soccer Club, Beacon Junior Baseball, Beacon Softball, we're really making strides to connect everybody. And going back to the night that we had on the turf when we were shooting off the fireworks, and we had every, all, you know, the youngsters there and the people that didn't even know that it existed before. I feel like it kind of put us all in the same positive place, and we were really proud of where we're going with it.
That was amazing, and it was truly beautiful to see the connection with all those community organizations. Again, those are organizations that generally require parents to pay a fee. We definitely have students in this district for whom food is in insecurity. So having an extra thing like, you know, access to a soccer team or access to any of these extracurriculars is not a possibility. So I said this was a challenge, and it is, this is just something I would love us to think about going forward. The way to bring those experiences in an accessible and affordable way to a broader group of the Beacon youth community would be really, really lovely.
Certainly. Challenge accepted.
Thank you so.
Oh, I have a question. Or not a question, but thank you for your presentation. I always really look forward to your presentation because your passion is really obvious, and anyone can see that, like, you really love what you do, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I was curious about crew. How much interest did you have from students at your recent informational session about the crew team? Did you have a good turnout?
We had 28 inquiries. I think a big limitation is the transportation to the docks in Poughkeepsie. It's challenging, especially when you have, you know, the wide range of sports that are going to be happening in the spring. But that seemed to be the limitation that people have. But there were 28 people. I'll know a little, tomorrow's my spring sports information meeting. So I'm hoping once we have that, we'll start seeing more accurate numbers on family ID.
Right.
And I'm hoping, I'm hoping for 10-plus.
Okay.
That was kind of a goal, so hopefully we can get there.
Is there a threshold by which, like, the program won't run for Beacon if we don't have X number of students interested?
No, the way that we've worked it with Spack and Kill is if it gets above a threshold, I want to say it's 12 or 15, that we agreed to pay a coaching stipend. That's why we did the increase with that. And it would be the same for swimming. So if 12 or 15 Spack and Kill swimmers came to Beacon, they would pay for additional coaching stipend. That was our agreement.
Okay. And you told us all about the benefits last year of moving to Section Nine, and I just have to say that you really delivered because, as a parent of two student athletes in the high school, I just see just so much more excitement and enthusiasm around the high school sports season this year. It's really been awesome, and I just commend you for that vision because it really, it really did make a difference for student athletes in Beacon, so thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Craig Seaman, for delivering.
Any more comments or questions?
Yeah, I just, Kristin, I appreciate a lot of your questions, actually. I got my answers from him answering your questions, so. I like to, you know, I do think that sometimes access to sports is sometimes an equity issue. Also, the, getting students lifeguard trained, actually, I thought was something I was going to ask as well, when you mentioned the swimming courses. You know, it's actually, I think it does a dual role. I think it provides a stat, some sort of an achievement for the student, but also even a marketable skill for summer employment, right? So, you know, I would encourage you to continue those kind of multipurpose activities.
Yeah, and if that can be accomplished during the school day, that's something that is really great for, you know, not having to get, have a parent drive a child to that type of opportunity. And would it be, would there be a fee for that type of certification or no?
It's minimal.
Okay.
It's not, so I believe it's, I mean, the last time we did it, the CPR first aid certification, I think it was $5 if the student wanted the certification.
For the lifeguard certification?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to Larry about that, but I believe it's, the whole point, the fee is usually associated with the training and the trainer, what they charge.
Right.
And our guys wouldn't be charging anything.
That's great. I mean, that is a summer job for a lot of kids.
Oh, yeah, and we need lifeguards.
Oh, we do. As a parent who shows up at pools that don't, can't open because there's no lifeguard, yes, for sure.
I mean, is there a reason why the school would not pick up the fee?
No, there's not a reason. We can discuss it.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual, and the board will return in about 30 minutes? Is that right, Matt? 30 minutes?
Second, probably shorter.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. One, two, three. Okay. We are calling the meeting back to order now that everyone is here. Looking at the agenda, I don't think there are any additions or corrections, are there? Or am I?
No.
Missed speaking? No? Okay, then, let's move on to parent groups. I know there's no one here, but are there any parent groups on Zoom that wish to speak? It doesn't look like it. Are there any student or school presentations that happen to be on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. So, Matt, are you ready to give your report?
Sure. Thank you for the time. I know we've had a bunch of presentations, and I just wanted to do some quick updates. First, I wanted to just, this is a very much not a comprehensive list, but there's been a lot of activities happening for Black History Month in the district. So I just wanted to kind of quickly go through some of the highlights. And again, it's not a comprehensive list. At the high school, the Black Student Union, which is a group that was formed this year, we have Mr. Hammond and Mr. Manderson are the faculty-staff sponsors, but it came from students, as you may remember, wanting to form it for this year. Last week, they put on, hosted a variety of activities and school pride and spirit activities as well focused on Black history and Black pride. And so that was really, their leadership was much appreciated. Roundabout Middle School, students at each grade have, either have seen or are seeing a film focused on different aspects of Black history. There's been daily announcements, lessons in different classrooms. There's also a hallway display of LGBTQ+ African-Americans highlighting different achievements and things to know about, about, about the LGBTQ+ community. So that's been great, too. So thanks to the folks at Roundabout for doing that. At Glennon, there's been a wide variety of, especially ELA activities, read-alouds, activities connected with the read-alouds, and also the addition of inclusive literature, both in the library and in individual classrooms, with all of, all having a focus on Black History Month. At South Avenue, students across the school are working on creating posters that provide a visual representation of, of some, an African-American person who's achieved quite a bit in history, and so the students are getting involved in both the research and the visual display. At Forestale, the research focus is on local trailblazers in the African-American community. So each class is putting together a focus on that, and there's going to be a gallery walk this week for parents to see some of the products of that focus on local trailblazers. Sergeant is much like Glennon, lots of activities focused through ELA. A lot of the activities are focused on biography, biography, excuse me, of famous African-Americans. And also, there is some music activities, I think both instrumental and vocal, focused on jazz and blues. So again, this is just an overview of some of the things that are happening across all the schools. There are a lot of individual lessons, and I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing. And I really love some of the student leadership that brought up some things that are happening this, this year, too. Just switching gears, we're going to be kicking off strategic planning. In my head, I call strategic planning 2.0 because we went through a process three years ago that created the vision mission, attributes of a graduate, and the district belief statements. So we're going to take that work and try to ramp it into some actionable objectives and goals. So we're really excited about this process. It's going to be kicking off with a survey of our community, staff, and students, and then also the creation of a steering group that will be representatives from the community, staff, students, parents, some board members. So I'll be speaking with you about that a little bit later. And that steering committee is going to take a look at the data we've collected, the work that was done in the past, and help try to at least begin to formulate a plan. On a personal note, I will be, these meetings are all set up. I'm really excited about, they'll be starting next week. I'm doing student focus groups at each of the buildings, at the elementary buildings, doing fourth grade and fifth grade, just a representative group from each of the schools. Roundabout, I'm doing one for each grade, and at the high school, I'm doing one for each grade, too. So I'll have 15 student focus groups happening over the next two to three weeks. The focus is varied. One, I'm interested in their input on the budget, and things we should be spending money on, things we should be improving as a district, things they want to see strengthened. And so I, last year, I did not do the focus groups, but I've done them all my previous years. I get a lot of great information, so I'm really excited about that moving forward. And I also look forward to presenting the information I gather to the board at probably the second board meeting in March. And then finally, our capital project building committees are moving along. We had two last week, we have two this Thursday. So last week, we had the high school and Glennon, and this week, we have Roundabout and Sergeant, and then next week, we have Forestale and South Avenue. So what we're doing in these capital project building committees is we are kind of getting an overview again from the architects, and also just charting a path forward for how we're going to get the design ready. And then the next meeting of these groups will be late April, May, in which we'll get even more design focus. In between that time, the architects will be working with individual people on some of the detail work. But this is for mostly, mostly these building committees are focused on all of the work that's going to be done summer of 2023. So it's still a little bit of a ways off. And that's all I have. Thanks, Flora.
So board comments, starting with you, Anthony?
Sure. The curriculum committee has not met since the last board meeting. The next full curriculum committee meeting is?
March 29.
March 29. Board comment, I don't mean to be harsh here, but I am going to vent a little bit about the governor and the mask mandates. So in November, there was an order to extend the mask mandate for 90 days that expired on February 21st. The governor sent out something on February 10th saying that masks were no longer needed in public indoor facilities, however, but the mask mandate stayed in for schools. That order expired on February 21st. They didn't give guidance to that until today. So schools were wondering, is the mask mandate required today for school or not? I understand that there are some districts, and most of New York State is on winter recess, however, there are districts like Beacon and districts in Dutchess County and Ulster County that are not on spring break. And again, I said back in November, there needs to be a matrix as to when the infection rate is going down and how we're going to start removing the mask mandate, and there's nothing in place. So public people, people in the public are wondering, what is the, what is the rules? There's misinformation out there about it. They think it's a local decision where it's not. It has been given to the commissioner of the Department of Health, and they just extended it for another 60 days today till April 22nd. However, it could be lessened based on her discretion, but yet, we don't know what that discretion is. Is it going to be the infection rate in the areas? We don't know. So I just think that New York State needs to get their crap together with how are we going to come up with a way that we don't have to wear these anymore? Just my two cents.
Okay. Kristin?
Thank you. The Facilities Committee met last week, and Matt covered most of the key points that were addressed at our meeting. Additionally, we met with our new part-time facilities person who is through Duchess, Northern Westchester Bosie. Is that who?
From PNW Bosie, yep.
PNW Bosie, Putnam, sorry. And his name is Perry, oh, shoot. Sheldon, I was going to say. He was, he's great. He's very experienced retired facilities director from Red Hook and also a former board member in Hyde Park, I believe. And he, he brings a wealth of knowledge and experience, and he will be both mentoring our current staff as well as handling the sort of more complex facilities needs that we have. And he was incredibly impressive, and it's great to have him on board. I think that's pretty much it. We did have, per Craig's request, because he sort of reminded the, about the ongoing messages that we've had about trees, Mr. Sheldon's already engaged with an arborist, walked the property of Sergeant, and looked at some of the trees that might be of issue for power lines and safety, and will be bringing us a plan for the next meeting. That's it.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay, Craig?
Audit and finance met also last week, and we did their usual review of the claims that you see on the agenda tonight. We also received a referral from the policy committee of several policies pertaining to the fiscal area of our operations. I will take a little more time to actually give those a good read and take them up at our next meeting. We had a very good response to our request for proposals from auditing firms for the position of internal auditor. This is not to be confused with our external auditor or the controller's auditors or our claims auditor, but it's a different position, which basically is like an internal consulting function that we began a few years ago. And the firm that was helping us was not able to continue with sufficient personnel to be able to be engaged in the future. with the sufficient personnel to be able to, uh, be engaged in the future. So we did the request for proposals. We had three firms, uh, two from up north and one from Long Island respond. They all looked, uh, well qualified with good experience in this area. And the prices that they were proposing were in the ballpark of what we've been doing or what we expect them to be doing. So at the present time, uh, Cordeone, uh, is doing a review of, uh, references and so on, doing our due diligence. We'll give a detailed look to those proposals, which are quite substantial. And probably, uh, before very long, we'll have a recommendation for somebody to engage. And, um, it was interesting that, uh, a couple of the firms mentioned a, an aspect that is a bit different than what we've seen in the past. And that is to take a look at your, uh, information technology security. So that strictly speaking isn't finance, but it's obviously all of our financial stuff runs on IT. So guess what? Um, we, we of course like to use these firms for providing us with insights into how we can make a better, tighter operation than we already have. And to spot things, uh, before they become any kind of a problem, uh, or if they are a problem, how to begin resolve. So we're very pleased that, uh, things have gone well. The other thing we did was to just launch an initial discussion about what we might do about our surplus property on Route 9D, uh, after we complete the, uh, stadium sale property. There's still a little bit left over. We've never seriously talked about what to do with it. Nothing urgent about this, but we thought we'd start thinking. So that's about it for, uh, audit and finance. And, uh, other than that, I wanted to say that, uh, I have met with, uh, Dr. Lambdal and, uh, Saggy Rudisindo O'Neil on the subject of the Beacon, uh, historic instruction, uh, local history, uh, being, be more accessible and available in our school district. So that, uh, that project, uh, will involve creating a community working group. That's the next step and, uh, getting started on that.
And that's with the Historical Society? Is that, oh, cool.
Great. Okay, Anthony?
Good evening. I actually have a visual report. Um, how do I share my screen? Oh, you know what? I'll just share this. So, um, in, um, I was helping my son with a Caribbean art project and we went down to El Museo del Barrio, which is on the east side of Manhattan. And they had an exhibit called Enfoco, The New York Puerto Rican Experience, 1973 to 74. And as I'm going through, um, you know, there's an education, um, a component to that, to that, uh, exhibit. And I'm on the board, so I'm actually gravitating towards that by, uh, Charles Biassini Rivera. And then I'm, I'm looking and, um, I notice South Avenue is on there.
Don't know why.
So, um, Escuela Primaria on South Avenue, which is a elementary school on South Avenue, September 1974. Um, and they had four photos there. Um, there, I, I, unfortunately, I don't know the teacher, but, uh, all the, um, the names of the, uh, looks like a home act class, uh, are both in English and Spanish. And, um, there is another picture, um, I believe, um, um, either the student or the teacher or both or some, you know, are, um, Puerto Rican descent. And, uh, there's another one, um, and the fourth one, right? And, um, I was just very pleased to see South Avenue.
Oh, cool.
In an exhibit in Manhattan on the east side. So, um.
I want those checkered pants.
Did you share the photos with South Ave?
I, I don't. I didn't. Um, I, I didn't know how to yet. Um, you know, uh, I figured I'd share it here and somebody can tell me what to do.
I, I would email them to the principal. I think he would be thrilled to see that.
I think so, too.
Okay.
Really cool.
That's super cool.
Okay. And the report?
Thank you. Melissa?
I don't have a lot tonight. Um, the next meeting of the policy committee is March 14th at, I believe, six or seven PM, seven PM, I think. We have tonight, uh, one corrected policy and five second reads for approval. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, great. I, I don't have anything tonight, so we will move on to old business. Uh, we have 10.01 and 10.02 for approval. Uh, can we vote on these at the same time?
Yeah. Can I just ask, did, did you speak to the legislators on Friday?
I did. I, I would like to give a report about that next, next time, if that's okay. Um, so I, we can vote on those at the same time? Okay, great. So, um, 10.01 is to, uh, was to remove, um, the payroll procedures policy for, uh, to update some of the language. And it was updated in 10.02. Uh, so can I get a motion to approve 10.01, uh, the removal of that item from the last meeting and, uh, 10.02, the revised, uh, version for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any comments or questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Um, in new business, 11.01, we need to adopt the budget calendar. Um, according to our attorney, uh, we need to adjust the date for the budget hearing to be within the required range of, um, 14 days of the vote, correct?
Yes.
So we are proposing to, um, move the date to May 9th. It's currently May 2nd for that board meeting to have the budget hear, hearing on that day. Um, would that be okay for everyone here?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I'm not sure exactly how to do this, but, uh, do we need a vote to actually adjust it and then a vote to approve it? Or can we just approve it with the, with the adjustment?
So you can make a discussion to say that what you want to add to it, and then you can add an item to the agenda.
Okay. So, um, I would like to add an item to the agenda. Um, can I get a motion to, to add an item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So then, uh, we would like to adjust the date for the budget hearing from May 2nd, um, to May 9th. All those in favor, right? Is, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes 6-0. All right. So then, um, a motion to approve the revised budget calendar, 11.01.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Comments or questions? I should have said, sorry. I assume there are none. Uh, six, so motion passes 6-0. Uh, moving on to the consent agenda, the use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the Board of Education who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that anybody wants to poll?
Just, uh, hold on one second.
Sure.
12.09.
12.09. Any others? Okay. Motion to approve, uh, items, uh, 12.01 through 12.18 minus 12.09?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 6-0. Motion to approve 12.09.
So moved. Second.
Comments or questions?
Just wanted to say with thanks.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Hold up, I just have a comment before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Flora, you did an outstanding job running the first meeting.
Yay, Flora. But I, I have to say one thing. Flora, I think that, I think you made a motion to approve 12.01 to 08 instead of one.
I said 18. I just mumbled.
Did you? Oh, okay. Okay, good.
Flora, you did an outstanding job. It's nerve-wracking, speaking from experience, running your first meeting. And you did it with grace.
Yes.
And, and you held it together through three presentations.
And all those people.
Like throwing you to the wolves for the first meeting. And you ran it so smoothly. So good job, Flora.
Everybody was very nice. All right. So a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Good night.
Good night.